Much allegiance.
To the flag of the high states of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which I am.
Okay, so we have a public hearing tonight in regards to purchasing the modulars and retaining the general funds. Anyone like to come forward and share?
Kevin Verbal in McCarran Road. So, I have to admit, I don't know very much about this, to be quite frank. I know this topic's been kicked around by previous boards and has always been panned by both the boards after consideration as well as the general public. And I've been trying to wrap my head around this. I understand the fiscal reasoning for it. Thank you, I agree. No, you don't have to be. I had a bit of an epiphany this afternoon kicking this around. And if you buy those modulars, what we're saying is that the space needs of DCS are going to remain as they are for 10 to 20 years. Right? That's going to be the policy from purchasing them. Because once you own them, you can't replace them, right? Can't even upgrade them. So, once you own them, that's going to be the thing. And I'm against that. I don't think that that's the correct course for Deerfield School District. So, I'm against purchasing, even though fiscally I understand it makes sense. My preference would be to dump them, get rid of them, and do the hard work that you were elected to do and figure out how to manage the space needs and get all of our kids into this building. I know it's a very unpopular opinion amongst the administration and I assume the majority of the current school board. But we're investing a lot of money and a lot of resources on optional programs at the expense of the three, sometimes four, classrooms that are outside this building. Preschool is not mandated. Kindergarten is not mandated. We have heard that we adopted those programs so that we could defray the cost of providing services to the kids in those age groups that are deserving of services. Because you have to provide the services for those children. And the idea is by bringing in a house, the district saves money. That's what we've always heard. And I don't know how many times I've come here and said, "Nobody has ever shown the numbers. Nobody's ever run the numbers to say, 'If we did it out of house, this is what it would cost, and this is what the program costs.'" And we say, "Well, we expanded the program to tuition in kids to help defray the cost." But my understanding is the tuition rate that we're charging doesn't cover the cost of the program. It doesn't, excluding the kids that need services, right? So, we're providing subsidized preschool and subsidized kindergarten at the cost of having three classrooms outside the building in trailers. How old are those trailers?
I think we determined roughly 30 years, right?
2001, I think. I thought they were in today. Yeah, 2005 and 2004.
So, they're 25-year-old trailers. 25 and 21-year-old trailers that we're going to buy, that's going to become, that's essentially onboarding it. In my opinion, it's onboarding it and making it permanent. I guarantee I'll be back 10 years from now saying, "I told you so." And yeah, it'll save money over the rent, but it doesn't. What it does is it kicks the space needs issue down the road. That's all it does. It says, "Well, you know what? We don't know what to do. We don't know how to do it. And even if we think we know what to do, we don't think we can do it." For whatever reason, right? Voters won't approve it, or time's not real, whatever the reason is. And so, you're going to end up with those trailers for 10 years, maybe 20 years. And I think that's bad policy. The other thing I'll say is if you keep them, if you buy them, if you buy them, then you should find a way to get administrative staff out in those trailers. Let the administrative staff live out there and let our students learn in the school that was built and intended for their education. The only other thing I'll say is, this is a serious question. This is a big question. It's worth asking, right? If you don't ask the question, you know, then you either assume you know the answer or you don't know the answer. This question should be a ballot question. It really should. We should be asking the voters of Deerfield what their preference is, right? Do we buy them? Do we rent them? Do we dump them? What should be the priority? How much money are we going to spend?
Ninety-four. Yeah, ninety-four, yeah, ninety-five, basically.
So, $100,000 to buy two 20 slash 25-year-old trailers. And it's interesting, right? Because a few months ago, we had wailing and gnashing of teeth as we went through our budget talks. For the last several years, we've had wailing and gnashing of teeth. It would be lucky to keep the district afloat because we're on default budgets. Although, the default budgets really are a distinction without a difference between the proposed budgets and dollar amounts, for the most part. And now, here we are at the end of June. You've got a hundred grand burning a hole in our pockets that we want to buy trailers. And so, is that the best investment, that $100,000, for the education of Deerfield students? My money says no. It is not. It's not good policy. It's not good use of the money unless you agree that we're going to kick it down the road and just leave space needs the way they are and use those trailers for classrooms, you know, into the next decade or two. So, my recommendation is don't take a vote tonight. It doesn't have to be voted tonight. You should think about this before you make the final decision. There hasn't been a lot of information given. What's the condition of the trailers?
Chris, do you want to speak to that?
Conditions of the trailers are fair. They are 30 years old. I think it was back in 2019, 2018, new roof for installed. Our, the company that I use for our heating and HVAC came in, looked at all four heating units to each mod. They're aged, but they're running in good shape. If anything does happen with them, like I told the board, we're going to be, it's going to be cheaper to just replace them than to have to withdraw the gas. It's our 13, which is pretty much illegal nowadays to use because of environmental concerns. So, we'd just be purchasing new units. But other than that...
Structural report? Is there a structural report on those structures? Structural integrity? Structural integrity? Is there a structural integrity report on those units?
I don't have one.
So...
Well, I was your determination, though, that there, that any kind of jacking or anything, that it's been determined that it doesn't need any of that? It's not showing that they're...
Nothing is showing to my eye, but if we do go through with... If we do go through with the purchasing or even considering purchasing the mods, the trailers, I would like to request that SIAVI, the rental company that owns them, comes in and just gives us their honest opinion if anything needs to be done.
So, with all due respect, with all due respect, if I'd have known that, I'd have brought my two old lawnmowers to the school district for sale at a really hot price. Because they were good mowers. You want to buy something, you haven't even had a third-party structural engineer group look to make sure that those things even have more than a couple of years' life. Because if you buy them, then you've got to crush them up, throw them in a dumpster, and get rid of them. What's the disposal cost on that? If I had to haul that off...
Their cost was around 17 grand. I estimated if we're going to have an extra one here, put it in dumpsters, be 20 grand, tops.
So, I can't see how we would buy something when we don't know the structural, the actual structural integrity of the asset from a third, a reliable third party.
It's not an asset, right? It depreciates faster than anything else. It's a trailer, right? So, it's literally, so you're arguing based on, like you said, you don't care about the fiscal part of it. It's, that's literally it. If they last us two, three years, we save money. That's it. We know they're going to last at least two to three years, based on their condition right now. Nobody thinks they're going to fall apart in two to three years. So, if we save that money, they could last us through next year, and we'd still save money if we had to throw them away at the end of next year.
What are we paying for rent?
$77,000. We're going to buy them for 95, so that's an $18,000 difference.
In year one?
Year one.
So, $100,000 on a 20-plus million budget. So, it's an asset, though. You're buying it, right? You buy it, you own it. To buy something for a hundred grand of taxpayer money and not know what you're getting before you buy it, that's bad mojo. That almost boggles the mind that that would be the order of operation. So, typically, you'd have it inspected by a third party. So, you have a reliable third-party report, so we're not, no offense, but you know, you're not relying on employees of the district, right? Because he's your employee. You want to buy it, you know, it's easy to skew his perception because he's your employee. He answers to you guys, right? So, there's a conflict of interest there. So, you need a third party to look at that and tell you what it is you're buying. Have we had an appraisal done on those? Do we know what the actual street value is, other than what the vendor wants to unload it for? Because the vendor's got you over barrel. The vendor knows they have you over barrel.
They do. June 30th, we renewed the lease. So, June 30th, I mean, we don't make a decision on it tonight, then we buy them again for another, or rent them again for another $77,000 for next year. And then, yeah, you want to put it on the ballot in March? That's fine.
If you do those things, right? If you don't decide and you don't do it by the 30th, if you don't rush into a decision, it allows you to have the assets inspected to see what their actual condition is by independent third party. It allows the community to be able to see that and form an opinion, right? It allows the school board better information. It allows you to get a much broader selection of public input than the handful of people that have showed up tonight. It just comes up really, really, really fast. And I don't know. My money says, "Don't buy them this year. Push it off." For all the years, we've, 20, 25 years we've been renting, one more year to do it right is money well spent versus rushing into it. My opinion. If you buy them, you're saying, "We're not going to touch space needs until those things cave in from a snowstorm." Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi. Bobby Anne Dossie, Five Brown Road. Miss you guys. So, I don't think you need to get an appraisal. We know kind of where they're at. Like, I think that you can't put admin out there either because there's safety concerns. The reason why admin is inside is to let people in the building. And then, what's hard is with the preschool and kindergarten, we're not required, but we are required for special ed students. So, it's a good service to have in the community. I don't think we should get rid of that either, but what you're going to run into, and I know you all know this, is that if you buy them, people will think that we're done worrying about this. But they don't know that, they might not know, or they might not know. There's no facilities out there. It's really a safety concern to keep them. I love the fact that you're trying to save money, but in the long run, it might make the community even more outraged. Because I think waiting at least until March, you're putting it out all on the ballot. I know that you give opportunities for people to watch this, and you don't really post it much online anymore, but on like Facebook and stuff. But I do agree that waiting just at least until March and getting all your ducks in a row so that you can say to the voter, "By buying these," it's not... It's not that we're never going to spend money on needs again. Because some people will be like, "Okay, that's done. We never have to look at that again." These are, they're slowly becoming obsolete. They're not even up to code. They're like grandfathered in. So, with all the big, you know, the big presentations about the space needs and what we can do, I think we shot for the stars and we realized, okay, the community can't afford that, but maybe there's a middle ground. So, I love that you're trying to save money just for the year, but then the consumer's going to think, "We don't have to worry about that ever again." Even though that's not really, it's not the best. Like, especially because now that's where we, everybody picks up and drops off, and then it's really a safety concern. So, it's a hard job, what you're doing. And I commend you for trying to save money, but I think that the majority of people, just seeing from what's happened in the past of years in this community, they're going to think, "Okay, that's done." And they're never going to want to pay you to fix like that situation. So, before you buy them, just know that like, what's your end goal? You know, what's your five-year? What are you looking at? Because if you buy them, your community's going to push back in five years and say, "We already bought those. Why are you trying to get a new one?" And then, you have to explain to them, "No, we were saving money," and blah, blah. Like, it's going to be a headache. So, thank you for everything you do. And just consider the, you know, the no restroom situation, and I definitely wouldn't put admin out there. Plus, Ms. Withy and Mr. Greve, they need to be in here. There's a lot going on. Yeah, there's got to be a way. There's got to be a way. But you got this.
Candy Davit, 44 Old Center Road. I want to give the school board kudos for pulling this out of the air as a short-term resolution. I will say, as a taxpayer who just got my tax bill, to even start discussing a physical expansion of this plant is a no-go for people that are within my age group and are retiring in this community. If you were to do as Mr. Verbal suggests and say, "No kindergarten," I'm not going to talk about the preschool, but no kindergarten, to get two extra rooms so we can get rid of the modulars, you would have an uproar. I know you would. Now, I am going to take a step out and say, and watch, there'll be one or two that will have children that will disagree, say, "We don't like them." But the kids love being out there. It is their own little campus. They have gardens. They have picnic tables. They have air conditioning. The upkeep, the roof, the carpeting, it's been, they're clean. If you can save money this year, if that's what you've determined, kudos for you. That does not mean that we don't keep discussing an expansion on this building and a need for it, but we're going to have to talk about how do you create revenue in the state of New Hampshire, which I know Mr. Verbal has tried to do in the past, and he's in agreement on some of those things. But you can't just keep cutting, cutting, cutting. And you've got to come up with a resolution. This is a brave resolution. It is a cost-saving resolution. And if these are here for five years, I've sat on this school board and I've seen them disappear, one leave, and it never, you guys, come and go. And lots of good brains sit here, and they can't figure it out. And like I said, with the tax bills that have just come out, you guys have to be really creative, and this was one way to do it. Thank you.
I have one quick question. Sorry. If you don't spend this money that you have excess of, does it go back to the voters this year? Because you have a lump sum that...
So, we have the lump sum fund balance, and then there's also retention funds. So, the reason for the public hearing was to talk about whether we were going to expend some of the retention funds. But bottom line, the board needs to vote to see if they're going to keep more retention funds. What's left goes back to offset taxes. So, it ends up being, sort of being the same pot of money.
Okay. But it does go back to the...
The board has retention funds, and they vote each year on how much they want to keep in that pot. So, if they keep money in that pot, it comes from the fund balance at the end.
Okay.
So, there's almost three. And I want to, this is my understanding, but with that retained fund, it can either, we can choose how much stays in that account, what we're going to spend, which is like, if we were to do the modulars out of that, and then, or retain none of it, or whatever that balance is, can go back to taxpayers. So, there's...
Potential...
So, there's spending, retaining, or returning. Really, it's kind of three options.
Okay. So, there's, you could just keep it all, or you could give it back to the taxpayers?
Well, you can't keep it all. There is a cap that you're allowed to keep.
Okay.
There's a formula. So, you can keep up to $384,000.
Is that just this particular school year?
Yep. Yeah, each year, there's a formula.
Okay. Something to think about.
Kevin Verbal in McCarran Road. So, now I'm confused. My understanding, maybe it was wrong, is that retained funds in the one-year revolving fund were for emergency use only.
It used to be. The regulation changed in the past few years. It used to be you had to spend, expend all of your funds before you could touch them, and there was a point in time where you needed to get permission from the Department of Education, but that RSA changed a few years ago. So, it doesn't have to be an emergency. But you have to have a public hearing before you can access those funds. So, the board could have enough of a fund balance that they, it's kind of one of the...
So, I don't want to spoil it for later discussions, but what is our fund balance looking like for this year?
It is later on the agenda. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
So, it's 424 right now, and there are 260,000 in warrant articles. So, if the warrant articles were all funded, it would leave 164,000.
424 plus warrant articles that pass that are not funded yet, because you got to get to the end of the year because they were fund balanced. Funded. And so, those total X. And then, I'm sorry, what was the last number?
164.
Okay. Thank you.
Robert Piero, 112 South Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work. I know you guys have to make a lot of hard decisions here for the school. I just want to point out, I was doing some research earlier today, and I found that in a 2005 school district annual meeting, the school board members at the time voted that, stated that they were renting the modulars for three years. Because at the time, right, they did not feel that the life expectancy of the modulars, right, wasn't worth buying the modulars, right? So, I'm just going to point out that here we are in 2025, right? 20 years later, right? Thinking about purchasing the same modulars, right, that were, people back then were saying were not worthy of purchasing. So, I'd ask you guys to reconsider that, and I would also ask you along the lines of what other people have said, right? That if you're going to go ahead with this, that you take the time to do the research, check whether the conditions are worthy of this, and also to put it to the vote at town. Thank you.
I just wanted to know, I thought kindergarten was mandated. I'm mistaken. We have to have kindergarten. We have to, we have to have kindergarten then. Yeah, so it's not a choice. Kindergarten's not a choice. It's mandated. We have to. I just wanted to clarify.
I missed something.
That's my mistake.
Well, that's what I thought, because something was said about getting rid of kindergarten.
Did you want to clarify that, Kevin?
Didn't it become mandated? I thought it was mandated.
I know there was funding issues, and for a while, we got a one-time grant. So, it was part of adequacy. So, I mean, I need the week that it was required because it became part of adequacy.
So, I don't know. My understanding is no district is mandated to offer kindergarten. The funding for kindergarten was from a Frankenstein bill, right? So, they wanted Keno. They also wanted kindergarten, and neither had the votes to pass in one or the other body. And so, they married the two together. The Keno funds would help fund kindergarten, and that's how, that's how state adequacy got keyed into kindergarten. But to my understanding, public schools are not mandated to offer kindergarten. You have to offer 1 through 12 to the age of 21, 22, somewhere in there. But I, to the best of my knowledge, kindergarten is not a mandate. And I get it, like, there are people who are veiling of that. My point is, when we implemented the programs and as we've grown them, we've always sold it as this cost-saving exercise. But nobody's ever shown any numbers to show if, 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 if we just continue the program, what would it cost to provide services to the students that have a right to those services versus what is the cost of having the program we have in-house? And the reason I suspect it's not money-saving is because nobody's ever produced the numbers, right? Because if it's money-saving, so you'd think somebody would run off, run those numbers and say, "No, Verbal's out of his mind again." And it saves us, you know, even if it saves 10 cents a year, it saves money. But nobody's ever shown those, nobody's ever shown those numbers. So, while we say it saves money, we don't know that it does. And we know we have an obligation for the grades that are in the trailer, right? They are certainly within the obligation window. So, you know, it's hard decisions. I get it. It's not easy. But we're implementing new programs. We're expanding those programs, even as we're complaining that we don't have the space needs for all these kids. And so, you got to balance it. I mean, if that, if you guys want to be brave and strong and say, "We believe that the space needs issue is, you know, intractable in Deerfield for the foreseeable future, and we're going to buy the modulars, and we're just going to keep using them until we can't to bridge the gap." If somebody's got the courage to say that, that that's really the policy we're going to pursue, you know, I would applaud that. I mean, that's got candor and honesty and, you know, is taking responsibility. But to say, "We're going to buy them, so we save a little money, and we'll see how long we have them," if we buy them, if we buy them, we are going to, we are going to milk them till they fall over. It's hard to imagine any other possible outcome. As far as gardens and benches, you know, last I looked, the school year was September through June, and most of that is late fall, winter, and early spring. And I imagine kids do sit on benches in the dead of winter. Kids do all kinds of things. I sit on benches in the winter sometimes. But the gardens, the gardens are probably a little inaccessible when they're frozen solid. But I doubt that.
I looked up the kindergarten thing. This is by Citizens Council. I don't have a chance to go to the national regs because they would take forever, but it says all school districts in New Hampshire are required to offer at least part-time kindergarten jobs. It was a half-dayful day. Yeah, issue.
It says also that it's not mandatory for parents.
Yeah, they don't have to send kids. They don't have to come.
But it is mandatory for us to provide these part-time.
Since everyone, or most everyone's gotten up and said a second thing, I'm going to say something. A second thing that I'm very un... A second thing that I'm very uncomfortable in saying. When we talk about implementing new programs, we've implemented high school choice. That's a new program that has raised our taxes. And I want kids to go where they need to go and what fits them best, I don't want to deny them that. So kindergarten is not a new program, preschool is not a new program, new implementation in this building, it's been in this community. And if we were to present a warrant article next year and say, in order to remove these trailers, we are removing kindergarten. Or just doing half-days, so we can give you a couple more classrooms. The community, I am ninety-five percent sure would not support that. So I would say again, I would encourage you not to waste any more money. Let's hope that those up at the State House, the governor, can think of ways to create revenue for our small towns. We're not Boe, we are not Newington, where we have power plants. Um, businesses aren't going to come to Deerfield like they have gone to Salem. We all moved to a rural area, because that's what we wanted, was, most of us, or the houses were cheap, it depends who you, who you are. So, um, it's really a debate on creating revenue for our, our public school systems, if we can do that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Is that the board?
Yeah, I figured we'd have a discussion after. So if there's no one else, then we will have a board discussion. So, there's a lot, lot there, right, with, um, the, like Kevin was talking about fiscal versus policy, you know? I, I really feel that, um, I understand the point that, um, if we purchase them, then we own them. But I don't, I think that a lot of the problem is that there's a, a lot of lack of foresight that happens. Not just this board, but, um, it, I think that we can do something like this to save money and not have it be, you know. Something that is gonna last ten to twenty years, I don't want that. Uh, I think the point is to save money, and we can't just, we can't just cut it off, we can't just, you know, eliminate them today. Uh, we either have to rent them again, or we buy them for short money beyond that. So I don't think that institutionalizing that is, you know, our goal at all. I think that, I can only speak for myself, but I think that we are still committed to getting rid of them eventually. Um, getting kids in the building. I, I think that, for me, it just makes way too much sense money-wise to not do it. And, uh, to the point that, about them, a two thousand and five board not being, not even them worthy of purchase. Uh, so they were, what, three and one-year-old, and they determined that they weren't worthy of purchase? I, I think that they prob- that's why we're in this spot, is because they decided not to purchase them, and so we've been renting them for that many years. We could have paid for them however many times over at this point, so I think that that's, I definitely don't agree with that.
Can I, I just wanna add some numbers to kind of go with what you said, so ultimately, it will cost us eighteen thousand dollars to purchase them. Because we wouldn't be paying seventy-seven thousand, so it's eighteen thousand dollars to purchase them. Over four years, that's three hundred and eight thousand dollars we will save, four years, that's a lot. I do, I do like the idea though, is there any possibility we could get a third-party person out there to check them and see, you know, structurally how sound they are?
Yeah, I'm sure we could, but, I, I mean, that's gonna cost us, what, twenty-five hundred bucks? That goes into our, I mean, to your point, it, we're not spending ninety-five thousand dollars, we're spending eighteen. Because that other money's already spent in rent, so we're spending eighteen thousand dollars, we're not spending ninety-five.
The other thing I wanted to say too is, I, I remember the study that came out from the, um, was it Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission? I think they said that they expect enrollment's gonna either stay the same or go down in Deerfield, correct? So hopefully, if we can get by for a few years and if enrollment does go down, I mean, we have to think about that as well. That there, that may lessen up some of the space needs in our, in our school. Like if we could go from three classrooms to two classrooms in some of them, that's going to free up a classroom. This gives us a little more time to see if that plays out.
Right, I, I, I don't, I mean, again, I'm only speaking for myself, but I don't think any of us feel this as a long-term.
No.
You know, but it's only for another ten to twenty years.
But to think that it would save that much money in four years, and yes, maybe then we have to pay twenty thousand to get rid of them, it's still, it's a substantial amount of money that we saved.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I, I just wrote down some notes, and I just had, just about the short-term versus long-term. You know, kind of what Bobby was talking about. And I think that that's, you know, that's a great point to consider, is that we, we need to start having these conversations about, like, what is our five-year plan to address space needs, you know? And, and I, you know, I'm still new on this board, and, you know, my, the first time I brought this up, it was, you know, expressed that this is a perennial issue. And, but we haven't gone anywhere. So, um, to me, this is, this is a step towards things that I said that I wanted to do, which is saving money. And I think, you know, people are crying out for that, um, to save money. So I think to weigh those, you know, or, or, save money, and I, I, I hear what, you know, Bobby and Kevin are saying about not making it something that, uh. People are gonna think that they already solved the space needs problem, and I, I think we should be clear that this does not solve those issues.
No.
This is, you know, this is literally, to me, it's literally just, uh, a cost savings. And when you look at it as we're spending eighteen thousand dollars, not ninety-five, the only thing that we're losing is the maintenance on those buildings. But again, the biggest fear on those buildings was the heating and AC units. And those would cost us equivalent to one year of rental to replace all four units. So, and that's a worst-case scenario, that they all failed at the same time.
I also want to address, um, someone said about moving the administrative staff, like, that really wouldn't work, for one. I mean, you guys need to be here in the building, that's really important. But then if you said, well, we're gonna put all the specialists out there, well, there's only one classroom specialists occupy, right? All the rest are little tiny closet spaces, so that wouldn't give us any solution either, because I just wanna mention that, that would just be one classroom. You did that.
Well, I never thought that putting administs out, out there would be the answer. I do think they should stay in school, and I did think that specials could go up there. It's easier if you're moving one, one child at a time, on a school.
Yeah, you could do that, but it's, right, it's just one classroom that gets freed up.
It's one hall, one.
Yeah, the one, the one by the cafeteria, that's the only classroom that has specialists.
Because the rest are kind of like.
Yep, or a little space.
I think there are others, you know.
So. There's no perfect answer for any of this.
No, I, I, I think that we do need to have conversations on, of the uses of, you know, I, I, the uses of our spaces, right? Not just, you know, that we need more, but I think, you know, we kind of grouped the whole music and art going out there together. And I think it was determined that, you know, art's definitely not feasible. Um, but, you know, if we got specials out there, that's one classroom that that frees up in the building. And then if we got, um, music out there, and they have their, their own modular, just music. That's two, so now we have three classrooms.
So which, what are you, what special are you thinking of moving out there, other than music?
That one, that one classroom that is, uh, the shared, right?
That's. Reading, microphone.
Oh, I see, so if you put, if you put specialists out in one classroom, and then you put music in the other two.
Right, so the music has their own modular, basically, right?
That would be three, then we have a fourth classroom.
Right, which, it's.
Yeah, it's too bad the, um, the world, not the world language, what's it called, not the words.
World language.
But that classroom's too small.
It was used.
Unless you had a really, unless you had at least any classroom.
It was used as a classroom.
Yeah, I know, but when I did the space, it's really tiny, I can't remember how many can fit there.
So that was used though for second grade one side.
Yeah.
What we determined was that two of the second grades had higher enrollment. We had eighteen kids.
Oh, so you have one smaller.
Sue Sam had like thirteen in that room.
I'll have to look at the map, I don't remember how many kids can go in there, I know it's not many.
We know.
Okay, so.
We considered that for this year, because it's a smaller second grade, but it really would be only for one year, because then we go back to the big.
Right, yeah, but I, I know that one year, you know, the second grade team made the decision that two of us would be okay with having.
Like twenty kids?
Yeah.
Twenty-one?
Yeah, and then Sue had the smaller group, so that we could do that.
That's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't want, I didn't mean to derail or.
No.
Away from, uh, from uses to purchases, but, um.
I think it's important, um, if you, if you have, if you purchase them, and you feel like you can make some switches like that, like we're talking about. To help free up some of the space, right?
Right.
So you're going to our personal space.
For sure.
Right.
To a certain degree. If you're doing the Japan special. It's better than nothing. I don't think it's safe to keep children there, like all the way along, coming back and forth. I don't think that's safe, the traffic, the fact they have to be in and out of the keys, I mean, we go over this, no, there's no place. So I, I think it does make sense to have to do that, right? Impossible, maybe, um, but it, it gets you, at least going in four directions, that everybody is saying, if you're fixing, we can do it unless we have a speech. There's got to be somebody to take, there's got to be some here.
Yeah, I just, I don't think, nobody's voting for an expansion anytime soon, so again, with all the taxes.
But I hear this, I luckily work at a transportation.
Yeah.
I hear this a lot, people are scared of that, like when we go over, the expansion. And I don't speak about things like that, I, so station, we talk about the weather, and where should you put your garbage?
Yeah, so I think we just need to be clear about our direction in this, in that the purchase is literally to save money. And that we're gonna work towards.
It's a step into.
Right.
Into, to do something. I am not against having half-day kindergarten.
Cause we, we need.
It's still kindergarten, but it's half-day.
Right, but we need, we need to, you know, collectively get together on things that affect that, right? Like when we vote in for a fourth, um, kindergarten classroom. It's not only a teacher's salary, that's another classroom, so that's going directly against our space needs goal. So those things have to be considered.
I'm just gonna throw out there, it just made, it made me think about this, we used to have like, um, like one full-time and then a part-time. So there would be an offering of full-time, but then there was also the part-time, for parents that couldn't do that, just not all parents could do that, they're working.
Right.
So they'd be able to send their kids to a half-day kindergarten, but there was a half-day kindergarten. Remember?
Yes.
It was, it was a choice.
So, and I'm not trying to be a jerk, but when I hear that, it's like, I get it, parents definitely have to work, I get that, I understand that completely. But that, is that the reason we offer full days?
I, I think I'm gonna talk for Kristen here, you can back me up, but I think the reason we offer full-day kindergarten is so that we can really support the kids and get their learning going. And they're finding more and more, the kids are coming totally unprepared for school. So by having a full day, it really supports their academic levels later on in the school year. So if the school can provide that, it helps with those kids later on, if you want to add to that, I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, most programs now that we use kindergarten enrollment for a full-day program, not for a half-day program. And most of the competencies, I always talk about when my daughter went to kindergarten, I was just glad she knew how to write her name and came up with all of these letters. And now kids coming out of kindergarten need fifty-one sentences to be called in. So it's, it's, kindergarten is not, um, you can't do that in half-day.
Yeah, sure, I understand that, for, you know, I get that, but then again, you say that some kids come to kindergarten and aren't in the pod to read. Those are kids that can use a half-day program, that's just saying.
Well, again, I, I don't wanna, let's, let's get back to.
Yeah, yeah.
Modular, so, um, is there any other comments directly related to why we should or should not purchase them?
Do, do share the legal opinions.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, um, the board asked at the last meeting that I speak with our legal counsel, um, regarding the board's authority to make this decision or not. Um, initially, the advice that I received, um, the advice was based on the premise that there was a warrant article at some point. About the acquisition of the modulars, and we've done a ton of research, we've, I think we finally found all of the years of warrant articles. And there was no warrant article, um, it was in, put in the budget. So if the board makes a motion tonight to move forward, it should be, our legal advice was that it should be based on further legal review. Because more review needs to be done to determine whether or not putting them in the budget, noticing the, but, you know, there was a note in the budget. We finally found the old budget that said, this amount of money is in here, it's a modular, and the setup fees and the, you know, so is that enough? That the, that the voters voted on that budget that had them in it, it needs to be reviewed before. So if you decided to move forward, it would need to be contingent on further legal review. That would allow you to encumber the funds, but potentially, if you don't have the authority to do it, then that wouldn't happen.
It's a wrinkle. So, so knowing that, um. What do you guys think? Do we, do we, uh, table this and we, um, put it on a, a warrant article for next year?
Well, if I understand you correctly, Patty, if we were to vote to do this, then legal would have to look at it and determine whether we need to do a warrant article. And then if we have to do a warrant article, then that would table the purchase.
Correct.
If they say it's okay, then we go ahead with the purchase. So I would recommend that we maybe vote on it tonight, but, and depending on what we say, maybe it's, I'm, you know, I'm with them. But if we do vote to purchase it, then we would have to wait until Patty discussing with legal.
And the funds need to be encumbered, so.
Yes, and we have to do that all against.
Well, you're up against it. Yes, you're very, very tight, right.
Yeah, I, I don't really like the idea of, like, kind of going around the specific warrant article. Like, it was voted into a budget, um, I think a lot of people are probably unaware of the details of those budgets. Compared to when there's a specific warrant article. Um, so I kind of feel like that's, like, going around the voters a little bit. As much as I think it makes sense, I mean, I've been pretty clear about that. But I also don't want to, you know, kind of bypass the voter on that and make, you know, do it legally, but not, you know, probably the way people would appreciate. Guys think about that?
It's hard, because we keep hearing, gotta find ways to save us money, find ways to save money, find ways, and then find a way that can save you some money. And people don't want that either, so it, it's challenging. And if we were to wait and put it as a warrant article, and it was voted down, then I guess we would know how people felt. So we wouldn't be able to do the same thing come next.
If, if they voted as a warrant article, then it is what it is, like, they decided that that's not where they want to save the money, I guess.
Correct, but, yeah, but I, so we would not be able to have the same conversation in June.
Oh, to like, do the, the work around. Oh, probably, yeah, probably.
That would get people upset if they voted down, yeah.
No, it's no is no.
Yeah, no is no, exactly, yeah, on which purchase that we continue to pay whatever the rental fee is.
So.
Wouldn't save any money, that's it.
Oh.
Want me to say something?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I understand what no is no, I know what that means, and I hear, I hear the people, all of us, who say, well, how long are they gonna last? All the, I mean, did. do you, do we have a contract that ended at a certain amount of time with this company?
The leases are year-to-year.
Oh, year-to-year.
Yeah, they used to sign multi-year leases, but um the board has not been, been doing year-to-year.
Year-to-year lease.
The board has chosen to do that, yeah.
More recently, okay.
Yeah.
So we could just keep paying for them full price till we give it time? Now, I do have some of these here, and I do notice that the month, monthly rate has gone up.
Yeah, they've, they've held the monthly rate, um.
Oh, wow.
Our business administrator, yes, has, has talked to them and they've been agreeable to holding, holding the rate for a while.
Okay, one year.
Isn't it planned to go up though with new carpets? Cause new carpets.
If we, if you chose to change carpeting, yes, it was three hundred dollars a month if you chose to replace the carpet.
We.
Okay, sure.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, more. So what I'm looking at here is with one module.
I don't know what I'm trying to. What's email?
On total monthly rate, one thousand nine hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Is that for two or one?
That's for one.
So if you continue to spend that money, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt. Are you, my money keeps spending.
Yeah, it just, I mean, fortunately, um again, this is like something that gets, keeps getting kicked down the road. And for whatever reason, it's, hasn't been put on the ballot as a warrant article. That's my biggest thing is like how how, you know, it gets talked about every year, how come it hasn't gone on the ballot? I don't, you know, I don't get that, but I wasn't here for that, so.
I mean, we don't put on the ballot everything that we do. I mean, we do maintenance, fire systems, things like that. I mean, they're not on the ballot, so.
Yeah, the, the legal review is to, to find out if you have the authority for the acquisition of those buildings.
And he just wants to make sure that you don't do something that shouldn't be done.
Right.
Keeping you out of trouble. Right, I'm ju, and I'm just saying, I would like to hear that if that's legally, we're okay with doing that. I don't see that that's any different than putting, and you're paving a new parking lot and putting on a new roof and it's all different things for the I guess it is different because it's buying it as opposed to maintaining it, okay. No, I just hate, you know, you said, why didn't we buy it way back when? It's like we're in this position again, you know, we're, we're deciding not to buy it again, and then people five years from now are gonna say, why didn't they buy it five years ago?
Yeah. I know.
You know, I, I just feel like we, we're going in this circle and then we have an opportunity to get off this merry-go-round.
I know, I know, I just. Yeah. Yeah, I agree, that's why I, I support it. I just, you know, finding that out today, like kinda you know.
I mean, the worst case is that people's.
Just to work out my sails with that, cause I, I don't want to, like you know, kinda do, do the workaround, but I guess I didn't think about it that way, is that like there's other projects that you can spend money on without.
We do have authority to, to run things in schools.
Uh. Right, right, and that's why, that's, and to me, it's like, you know, the conversation was brought up about the, the parking lot lights and stuff like that, that's not a cheap project. We're gonna spend less money on this.
Try, try when we do the H-back.
You know, so, right, so.
It's not, um, and it, you know, if you choose to move forward with the motion, it, it's, you know, adding the language pending a legal review make sure that you didn't go around anything or do something you weren't supposed to.
Yeah.
It just, if you want to do it, then I would suggest you add that language. If you don't wanna do it, then we don't want to do any further legal review.
Any other discussion?
Just wanna say one other thing, if we do purchase them, I mean, even if we have to get rid of them in a year or two, we still have to save money.
Exactly.
You know.
That's what I mean, there, I don't think, I mean, Chris is confident that these things are gonna last us more than three years, right?
I would say so.
Yeah. So to me, from a cost-saving standpoint, which is what, at the end of the day, that's what people want, you know? People are, you know, so I got my mind made up, is uh, is there any other discussion? Alright. I'm gonna make a motion to purchase the modulars using retained general funds pending legal review. Sorry. Um, yeah, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next order is minutes from March.
I'm gonna move that we approved the March nineteenth minutes and thank you very much for making those changes.
Look good.
One second.
Second.
Sorry. It's up to the board, you can, and that was the whole, it was to do one.
Okay, okay.
March nineteenth. I did that just because I have comments on one of them, so.
Okay, alright. Um, take a vote to approve the March nineteenth minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll be honest, I didn't get a chance to review the twenty-first.
Um.
I, I'm good with the seventh.
So why don't we make a mo, make a motion to approve the minutes of May seventh?
I'll second that.
So Owen and.
Cannon.
Sorry, oh. Uh, all in favor, approve the May seventh minutes, say aye.
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 And I'm still gonna make a motion to approve May twenty-first, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
I'd make a motion to approve May twenty-first minutes.
I was, go ahead, Miss. I was looking at.
And then we usually have discussions, so I just wanted to, I wanted to add to the solar, cause it talked about the rate going up, but I wanted to have in the minutes that the solar will still save us fourteen thousand one hundred eighty-three annually. Yeah, I, I wrote it already. Cause I think that's important to have in there.
So, cause I can get added or it's.
Go. I might, I might have missed a two in there, okay.
Put the last one on there.
So um, did you make it, uh, did you wanna edit them or did you wanna approve them?
Yeah, well, I made the motion, cause usually then we have a discussion.
Okay.
So I was just in the discussion, I was making a change. I, I just wanted that it had the rate, you know, it went up from how it's point seven to the point nine or whatever, and I just wanted
Okay. Oh, yeah, right.
in there that it still saves fourteen thousand something, what, one hundred eighty-three a year, that's the expected saving, so
Fourteen thousand one hundred.
just wanted people to know it's still gonna be saving, we're not be paying for it.
Okay. Right. Yes.
Okay.
Should we just table that?
Uh, all in favor, is that?
Oh, all in favor, has edited, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. Public comments.
Kevin Verbal in the Karen Row, well, congratulations on, on making a, a decision. It's not an easy decision. Um, you know, you can't make everybody happy all, all the time. It was interesting, so Donald, to hear your, your comments about um Southern New Hampshire planning or whoever came up with the numbers, because it, in our fairly recent previous school board, you know, with people advocating very hard for a forty-five million dollar expansion and renovation because the prediction was that student enrollment would continue to climb um in, in Deerfield. There certainly, that certainly was not a unanimous opinion, uh, crystal ball is kinda, kinda foggy on that, but I, but I appreciate you taking a look at other, other sources, cause I, I agree, we're more likely to stay flat than, than anything. The parking lot's not the same, right? So um I happened to be digging through warrants uh recently for various reasons. And there has been a lot of warrant articles on the school's side, put money away to pave that, that parking lot, right? That parking lot got paved because money was put away for the purpose. It's a little bit different than a roof, right? You have money to maintain the building, you have to maintain the building, you don't, you don't have to pave a parking lot. So the, the district worked at putting money away specifically for that purpose, so that's something the district um decided was a priority and, and, and we did it, so it's, it's not, it's not really the, the same. As far as, as far as school choice, cause you know, it's, this is, this is, this is gonna be another perennial favorite because it's a three-year contract with, with the schools we have today. And, and as of the school year that we are in, Co-Brown, Northwood Academy and Pembroke Acad, and Concord High School, so Concord High School are almost a parody for tuition rates. And while it is true that the unprecedented thirteen-year unilateral contract with Concord High School failed at the ballot box, did have a first-year teaser rate, which would have saved the district money. After the first year, the tuition rate reverted to a formula. And if you don't have the thirteen-year proposed contract, don't worry, just look at the memorandum of understanding. Because that three-year contract has the same formula that the thirteen-year contract had after the first year. So while we would have saved some money in the first year, the second year, it would have been exactly what we'll be paying next year, cause the formula is exactly the same. Past performance is not indicative of future returns, but if you graph out tuition rate over time for Co-Brown and for Concord High School, they are both increasing. Concord is increasing more rapidly than Co-Brown, and I would be surprised if Concord High School's tuition rate is not higher than Co-Brown in the next school year, right? That'll start July first, technically. So, all, all this talk about school choice cost us a fortune, it, it, it didn't. Right now, in our existing school choice model, the only thing that can save us money is if children in Deerfield choose go to the high school within our SAU Pembroke Academy. Cause the Pembroke Academy tuition, going off memory, and I'm sure the superintendent will correct me if I'm wrong, is about twenty percent less expensive than Co-Brown or Concord. Right? Because that was actually one of the discussions, if you wanna save money on, on high school tuition and force all the Deerfield kids to go to PA then you get an instant, instant windfall. I, I don't know what their increases look like over time, I have to confess, I, I didn't track that. And school choice is something that went to the voters. We asked the voters if that's, if that's what they wanna do, and that's, that's what they, that's what they wanted to do. Uh, my, my gut tells me they're gonna continue to wanna do that, because I think in short order, there'll be more Deerfield kids attending Co-Brown than, than Concord. But I think the Concord number will always be significant. It, it would be interesting. Who, who goes to the executive board meeting? Who's the executive? It would be interesting if at the executive board meeting, it was made known wa, more broadly, cause I, I don't know how broadly it's known. That Deerfield has expanded school choice with respect to high schools, that PA is an option. And it would be in, in the SAU, well, not maybe not the SAU, but certainly the Pembroke School District's best interest to do some research to, to find out, you know, why, why is it that Deerfield kids tend not to select PA? Right? Cause PA, PA could do some very easy research with local customers to figure out, what is it, what is it about PA that makes it less desirable than Concord High and Co-Brown? Because if you know that, then you know what to build on and improve, which is, which is my segue. You know, we look at test scores for math, English, language, arts and science, and uh, you know, I, I guess they'd be best characterized as flat since we've gone to New Hampshire SAS, but yet we have other schools consistently very high, very high performance. And I, I've suggested it to this board in the past, and I'll, I'll suggest it again, we should be talking to the highest performing schools in the state. We should be asking them what they are doing that's making them so successful. And we should strive to onboard and or mimic the things that they are doing that's making their district more successful academically than others, so that we can improve our district. I, I've been begging school boards to make this a priority. Once a year, we get assessment for results review and, and, and that's, that's about it. Curriculum review board, that was set up in response to, to a little less than half the population not liking the demonstrably failed Common Core state standards. But that's, if we wanna improve Deerfield, the easiest way is to look at the New Hampshire schools that are high performing, figure out what they're doing that we're not doing and, and onboard that, and, and then I'm begging this board to, starting tonight, make academic performance improvement the top priority of the school board in Deerfield. Open discussions, really, instead of just onboarding whatever the experts are telling you, cause they've been wrong, right? We've been doing that for decades and, and we're flat at best. Um, let's, let's go back to what, what we know works.
Thank you.
Andy Davit, forty-four Old Center Road, I feel like I'm a dog chasing my tail, so I'm going to at some point um ask Mr. Verbal to just have a conversation with me, because I voted for school choice several years ago, and then I voted as long as it didn't raise my taxes. And school choice passed unanimously, but it said, please don't increase my taxes. If, a, and now he's saying Co-Brown and Concord are pretty much equal in tuition. But if the school board had gone to Co-Brown or had gone just to Concord and said, we're sending everybody, what would our tuition be? We might be talking differently, and I believe from my perspective that that didn't happen. Um, and so I just want people to realize, that's why our taxes are going up, we have to own it. And if we know how the community is going, then we own it. But it's not kindergarten, it's not preschool, it is because we went this direction. And um it wasn't the warrant article that I had voted for, thank you.
Bobby Anne Dosty, Five Brown Road, um, just to kinda speak on the last speaker's comment, um, Mr. Verville, oh, sorry, no names, um. The first person, the first person explained it very clearly that when we voted on school choice, we were only given one sum from Concord High. But if you looked deeper, it was for one year of tuition from Concord High, and then the rates go up. So although the community may not have seen, we wouldn't have been saving as much money as you may have thought, because Concord was only giving you this pretty little bow for one year, and after that, the it would escalate as, as it has, so we, we might have saved money for one year of going to Concord High, but the school choice in general over the timeline, it might save us more if, again, kids were to choose Pembroke Academy, we would save a lot of money, cause Pembroke Academy is cheaper than Concord High, so school choice has the potential to save us even more money than we were saving before. Um, because Concord High's tuition was going to go up, they just, the school board at the time didn't give us that information because we didn't have it, it was an equation. Um, something, I also wanna retract back, um, I'm glad you made a decision, that's a really hard decision for the modulars. Um, but in the future, you, the board tends to go over budget every year for legal advisory, every year. You go over budget for, for contacting your legal advisory. Um, Patty Sherman gave you good information saying, you're gonna have to go back, I got this information from them. He's saying there was no, or she, they said there was no warrant article. So you, you may spend more money going back, you voted, you're gonna go back to legal and make sure you don't need to do a warrant article, but then he, they might turn around and say, you need to do a warrant article. So just, you might just have been spending more money than you had to, um, so yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else? Alright, to the board discussion regarding public comments, this is the first time we're gonna do this.
Yeah. Um, I have a few things I want to.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission study came out well after, when we were trying to do the addition. It came out, what, like three years, Patty, after the addition?
It was, that was later, and then there was also the other, um, I can't remember the organization that we participated in now. Yeah, I'm sure something, housing.
Yeah, so I'm just, so to, you can't really say, oh, the numbers aren't the same, this is new information that came out pretty recently. Legal advisory, the reason we go over the budget is because it's been a default budget for so many years, we keep trying to increase the legal amount, and then we keep going back to the default budget. And that's why we're over every. And that's why we're over every day.
Can I speak in the ghost of candor? So the intention for putting board discussion regarding public comments was not to respond and have a conversation. Her intention from a training that she attended was, was there anything that you heard during public comments that the board would like to put on a future agenda? Like, I would really like to talk about that. Or did the board ask, or did the public ask a really simple question that I could answer or the chair could answer? That was the intention, and, you know, board can do as they wish, but I just feel like.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, so to that point, I mean, she did introduce that, but I think that people, I mean, if you guys watch board selected meetings, it's literally a back-and-forth conversation, and I don't see any harm to that. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's the way that we should operate, but I think people are looking for, you know, this to not, I don't know. I think it loses a lot of its luster if we table this for two weeks and then say, you know, we're taking the month of July off, so I just think, you know.
You can make a motion to waive your policy too, if you didn't know that. So your public comment policy that it's not a conversation, the board can waive that policy if you wanted to have the conversation.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive that policy. I don't think that all of us are fully in the know of that policy anyhow, so. I'd make a motion to waive that policy for this meeting, please.
Ellen, did you say, Ms. Sissy, you had to say.
And so that, I guess I want to, I'm not understanding now. I thought it, so that would allow us to continue how Ellen was talking? It doesn't allow us for conversation?
That would be up to the board. You know, if you wanted to waive the policy before public comments to have conversation, you can do that. You can waive the public comment policy now and have discussion about what was said.
I do agree that times things come up and we can't say anything, you know, the way it is. My one concern with getting the conversation going is most nights, there aren't a lot of people, but there could be evenings, and I'm not saying those conversations aren't important, but there could be times that we could be spending an hour of the meeting just with public comments.
Yeah.
And so in order to move forward with other things. But again, that's not saying I don't appreciate the comments. That's something that I have always thought we need to get more information. But that would be my one concern with changing it completely.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And I think there are things on our typical agenda where we could save time, but, so we're going to talk about some of that stuff later anyway. But, um, so we'll take a vote then to have, right? Because I made a motion, we'll take a vote to have an open discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Oh, I thought you said, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't hear you.
Allergies are killing me this year.
All right. So did you want to continue, Ellen?
Oh, just one other thing about the Concord tuition. I mean, that, and maybe Patty, you could speak to this a little bit. That was, there was a base amount, and then, yes, you might add some money for it for a year, but it was a base that started at like $16,000. And so maybe you add a little bit, but there's no way you could compare that with $20,000. It's not like it went from $16,000 up to $20,000, and then they were the same. So it was over a long period of time. So it's still quite a bit less because it was a, it was a base amount for a period of time, right?
I'm not even going to pretend that I remember the formula from that proposal, but it was a formula and a calculation, whether it mirrored the, I don't remember, but it was based on their actual numbers and calculation. And the exchange between the business administrators of the end-of-year forms were what the calculations are based on. And it started at $4,000 less. I mean, you're not going to all of a sudden have a $4,000 increase.
So you and I learned something in our meeting with Patty the other day about that variable rate, where it's just something that, you know, we're really getting, you know, the bad end of the deal.
Now we're getting, yeah, now we're getting killed.
Yeah, right, so, but it's a variable rate from either three or three and a half to eight.
Right, three, 3%, or the actual calculations are somewhere in between, right?
Right.
But the previous concept that we had, the long-term contract, started with a base amount that was way, way less. It's not like after so many years, it would have been up there. We're at a point right now, because Concord said, well, you're not sending all our kids, so we're moving it up to like $19,000 as opposed to $16,000. And then with that calculation, it's gone up now that it's pretty close to, it's like $300 less than Co-Brown.
Wasn't there another fee that Concord didn't charge us?
Capital fee.
When all our kids went?
It used to be per pupil capital fee, and the negotiated contract eliminated that, right?
So now that's in there?
Yeah. I would think it must be.
We pay that capital fee now.
I just remember the DAB forms, but never did.
But the town voted on that, so you're kind of like beating a dead horse at this point.
And you're factually incorrect on how those contracts work. You need to reread them.
And I think it was also, it's a three-year contract versus the longer. Oh, it is now, the long-term. I'm talking about the long-term contract. The three-year contract, you can't even compare that to what the long-term contract was.
But I thought that Kevin had said that the, that that formula was the same.
It might be, but if you're starting at $16,000 and you're adding so much, it's going to take an awful long time to get to $20,000.
No, how the formula works.
Okay, but we'll just table it because I don't have all that information right now.
I want to make a comment on the public comment or its suggestion about asking successful students, how they do it. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I wrote, made a note of that too. So Kevin, you must know, they probably have a, is okay if I talk to Kevin? I'm sorry. There must be, the Department of Environmental, well, they don't call that anymore. But anyway, they must have a website that has all the SAS scores, and you just look for schools that are similar to our schools, like, you know, K-8 or whatever.
So that, that depends on what you want to do. So the disaggregated data going back probably close to 20 years is available. The problem with that is it went from kneecap to best back, smarter balance, then to New Hampshire SAS. So at this point, I'd focus on New Hampshire SAS. What, most of the, most of the spreadsheets now have sort headings. And so you can, you can pick what you want to look at. At the grade level, it's a little more difficult because you're testing, what, four through eight? And I don't, I don't know that there's an aggregate for middle slash elementary school. So the graphs, like, so the graphs that I made for the high schools, I sorted on high schools. And then I selected English Language Arts, then Math, then Science. And because there's so many, you can't have the name of all of them. I picked the names of the schools that I was interested in versus the state average. And when you, when you do that, you see where that is. And then if you do that over multiple years, you know, you see this S curve, sideways S curve. And the top 10% are very consistent, the bottom 10% are very consistent. The only thing that's interesting is you can have a school that's like top 10% in English Language Arts that's not quite so good in anything else. More often than not, they do really well at two, but not three. But those, you know, those high-performing schools, that's where you want to go. My opinion is to say, well, they're wealthy towns, and they're just better than us, and, you know, there's nothing we could do to mimic what they do. I've always found that to be a bit of a cop-out. So it, the only way I know how to do it is brute force, download the spreadsheets, you know, cull your own data and sift through it and decide who you think is worth talking to. You know, the problem with size or financial cohorts is that you start to, you're artificially culling, right? Really, all you want to know is who's the highest academic groups, who's doing the best? And then try to figure out what is it that they're, that they're doing to be the best. That would be my recommendation. And if I can, you ought to read both contracts. The 13-year contract had a value for the first year. And then the second year and on, it has the same formula that the three-year contract does. So the first year, right, and that was the known number, or close to, right? The most, the only number that would be estimated. But year two and on were not based on the first year. They were based on the same formula we're working on. And so in the second year, we would have reset to exactly where we are on tuition because that formula is looking at Concord's actual spend per student, basically, right? What it costs to educate a kid. They've got to formulate, calculate that. And they're basically saying, that's what you're going to, that's what you're going to pay. The formulas are identical. So the loss of kids didn't have anything to do with it. The only thing that makes, that made the contract look so good was that first-year teaser rate, which was calculated in a completely different manner than year two and on. And year two and on are not tied to the first year. They're the same formula that we're on today. Thank you.
Any other comments about public comments, discussionable questions?
Am I allowed to say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry. Bobby Anne Dostie, 5 Brown Road. For the getting to know locals, like New Hampshire schools that you want to take, pick and choose from, SAS is hard because some kids just don't take good tests, like, they don't do testing well. So it's hard because when, for example, when we were looking at high schools, we looked at culture. We, like, the culture of the school, we looked at cleanliness of the school, we looked at, are there even bathrooms you get to? Like, so maybe talk to your, you've been teachers for a while and retired. So maybe talk to people that you have friends, friends and family and neighbors and say, hey, what's a school that you would recommend? Because sometimes SAS is just a big, long test, so there might be schools.
I see that as a starting point, Bobby.
Yeah, yeah.
As a starting point.
Yeah, definitely. And I'm not telling you what to do.
You're talking to the choir as far as testing, so.
Yeah. So I was just saying, maybe look at the culture of the school and all that jazz.
Yeah, to that point, I, we had talked briefly, maybe it was actually, maybe it was actually when I was running and stuff, just thinking just about ideas of engagement with people and like what they really care about, you know, all the time and getting the climate of the communities, you know. Just having, you know, even informal polls, you know, stuff like that. That would be something we could ask them is, you know, what schools, you know, which she just asked you, or what other schools would parents, you know, aspire our school to look like? All right. Gender review.
I have one thing to add, yeah. So I would like to have a conversation about hiring over the summer under media business, if I could. And then I have a couple of additional, when we get there, informational items for you. And then high school transportation update is under informational item. And Mrs. Cron is here, so I don't know if you wanted to move that up so that she doesn't have to sift through the whole meeting. That's okay.
Which one was that?
It's under number 13. It's a bullet point, so if you, you know, if you want to consider moving it up.
Yeah, we could put that at the top, that's fine. All right, so, Miss Cron.
So I had responded to Superintendent Sherman regarding a bus for Co-Brown. We have drivers that tell Kelly and Tom at day that they are coming back. Things change over the summer. Kelly's a big believer of not counting her chickens before they hatch. There are two drivers that are Deerfield drivers that are questionable upon returning. I've had conversations with Tom and Kelly about both of these drivers. Again, it's not always public information, and communication gets missed because there are short drivers, and both Kelly and Tom are driving and training and busy. So we'll have a better answer for you guys in August regarding if the possibility is there for a Co-Brown bus, depending on what happens with two of our drivers returning in August. So for now, we have to table the Co-Brown bus situation. So. Is there anything else I spoke with or, you know, conversed with you today about Concord High School summer orientation? You approved budget money, so we'll be doing, providing a bus to Concord High for the summer orientation. I think it's probably best on to their weeks. And we'll, I'll get the routes together for Kelly to send out to Salam at Concord.
So as of right now, we only need one more driver to be able to have that.
Possibly two. There are two drivers that are questionable to keep six buses running at Deerfield, two buses to Concord, and then a bus possibly to Co-Brown. Because as it stands now, the other driver and I will probably maintain our Concord High routes. And that would just be tentative on the two drivers here at Deerfield. So, and I, based on what our numbers were at the beginning of this school year, I'm not sure we would be able to double up at the beginning of the year because I think I told you guys, we were over the 51 capacity at the beginning of the school year. So me driving a double route would probably not be an option at the beginning of the school year.
So can we plan to have you back with that updated first?
Right, so that was another question I had for Superintendent Sherman was, are you guys meeting that first Wednesday in August? Like, is that when you want to have the information by?
Yeah, because Co-Brown starts earlier than Concord.
Correct. Yeah, they start the middle of August, and Concord starts towards the end, closer to when Deerfield starts. So yeah, I can absolutely come back, and Kelly and I will probably be here together. We'll have the routes ready for you guys to approve and have information on Co-Brown route, if we could do a Co-Brown bus. And I will probably provide the same route or something similar that I gave you guys when we were looking at it, December through March timeframe, I had given you guys in that packet, a similar route, again, based on student ridership.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
All right. 2025 of the year-end spending.
So we, I gave you spoiler alert earlier. So your fund balance is at $434,000. Minus the warrant articles being funded for $260,000, leaves the balance of $164,000. And then there were a couple of outstanding items, and Mr. Kupos is here to talk about the fence. He has more information to share and probably a better understanding of what the bids were for than I did.
Evening. In your package, you'll have the fence breakdown of all the contractors that responded to our bids, to my RFP. I did not send out an RFP for this, basically based on the amount of the, what, avenue register stating cost wise. I did, I took, did call four vendors and got, I believe, $25,000. Six vendors and got responses from four of them.
And the only thing I had was the, from the surplus document, I don't have any new.
Yeah, there's nothing to copy.
I didn't have any new information, just the, just the part that was added to the surplus document from last time. Did you get additional info? You're talking about the info that we reviewed last year.
Um, I guess I'm re, I'm talking about the information last meeting that I was.
You did not add anything to that one.
Um, no, the only thing I did show up was the number from American Fence.
Yes, so it was in the back of that surplus document last time?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, all recontractors are going with these same commercial-grade fencing rails. Top rails, no bottom rails, all the posts will be cemented. top rails, no bottom rails, all the posts will be cemented in concrete, six feet high, black lattice privacy slats and a twelve foot swing gate.
I have a spreadsheet here that Chris shared, you want me to print that?
Did you have an updated number on one of them that we said?
On, yes.
American Fence, you said?
American Fencing, their final price was seven thousand ten dollars.
So that would have been the option two?
Yeah.
Yes.
This, so this has changed because I think the one we had had a ten foot wide double drive door.
Yes.
So it's a twelve foot now. Did you have a recommendation, Chris, for the board over that when we looked at these?
Reliable Fence came in at five thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. AQ Fence came in at five hun, five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars with a price difference of a hundred and fifty-one dollars. Reliable Fence is asking for a fif, I'm I'm only gonna present the top two. The other ones kind of go a little higher and I don't think, I'm sure their quality is good, but I just don't think what we need is justifies their pricing. Two to three week, two to five week lead time roughly on both Reliable and AQ. Reliable Fencing has a fifty dollar, fifty percent deposit and AQ Fence, AQ Fencing is requiring no deposit. With only a hundred and fifty-one dollars difference in between the two, I would suggest either or. AQ Fencing is a local contractor where Reliable Fencing, Reliable Fencing is winged wide. So then I give it to AQ Fence, local contractor. I think that's the right decision with only a hundred and fifty-one dollars difference.
Amount for AQ? What was the amount for AQ, five thousand?
Five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, that's why he's recommended the student set of American ones.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the fence from AQ for five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. I agree, I mean, for a hundred and fifty-one difference, it'd be nice to give it to a local vendor.
Yeah, what was the total number?
Five thousand nine hundred and fifteen.
I also agree that I would prefer to give it to AQ Fence, especially from a hundred and fifty dollar difference. But I don't know, I just, with all this spending talk, I feel like I don't know how much it really, how much value it really provides to us. It's kind of just a facade of safety, it's not. Because that that gate just ends right there and somebody can just walk right around, you know, I just.
I think, I don't think the conversation was about like fencing in. It was more concern that the, I don't know what you call those common things, were not the best deterrent for cars. That there have been a couple of times when people were like ready to just drive through that and whereas the gates and a fence would totally give the, like, yeah, don't be coming in this area. And then at the beginning and the end, Mr. Reeve, I think if I'm right, during drop off and pickup, he would open the gates, allow the cars, and then they get shut immediately to stop and deter. So it's certainly your call, but that was, I think that was more in the conversation.
I'd like to add one thing that I have reached out to the fire department and the police department on two separate occasions, asking them for comment regarding the installation of the fence. I have not received a response from either department.
Yeah, that was something that we had definitely requested, so I appreciate you doing that. But I don't know that we want to go installing something without their go ahead.
I agree.
Yeah.
So.
Then come back and tell us and take it down.
So I I would make a motion to table this until we get.
We have a motion already, let's so we so you know, we can vote though.
Oh, sorry.
We have not.
Yeah, so unless there's any other discussion. All right. All in favor of purchasing the fence, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, so I make a motion to table this until we get that answered.
So I will reach out again to.
Yeah.
Well, you're you're past surplus funding now, so it's gonna have to be a later on project. I would still try to get an answer, but if you don't do it tonight, you're not gonna make it to year end.
Yeah, I don't think that we can install concrete in the grounds, you know, without them, for this, yeah. I think it's, it may make it a fire.
It's just, just worried about emergency vehicles being able to get to the school at all times.
Chris, thank you for that. It was a lot of work to get those quotes and get short meetings and.
Yep.
It was just zero, it was, yes, yeah, so failed, yeah.
And then I believe at the last meeting, there was questions about the landscaping.
The price comparison.
Oh, yeah, we were just comparing, I know there were no other bids, but we were just curious how that compared to this year's price.
Actually, I came up with this spreadsheet.
I think that was in the derive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This guy has been our landscaper for the last two years. They do a good job, very responsive. If I don't see something I like, they're quick to make corrections. They actually go out of their, yeah, out of their way. They do all the mowing on the weekend. Before that, we were having contractors here during the middle of the week, which was a real disruption, especially during the spring. Prices were outside, they were trying to fight. Sean Stinkier is kind of going out of his way to make sure everybody is satisfied. So if you look at the pricing for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and then I did a quick spreadsheet, this is a three year contract that we're offering them through twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight. I gave you the change in the per price cleanup for each line item.
Yeah, I think it's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially for a three year.
For staying flat for three of them.
Three years to that new rate, I think.
Yeah, so I mean, you can't expect, you could expect more, but I don't think you can expect much less from someone trying to run a business with four or five guys that are running around here on the weekends.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
Okay. So I have, I, I slipped and I told him that he had the contract, so I can.
Yeah, they voted last time.
Oh, they did, oh, okay.
Yeah, we we just, we just wanted to see, because it was like, well, here's the one bid, but we had nothing to compare it to.
Oh, sure, sure. I should have been here for that one.
No, no, I appreciate that. Do you have anything else, Chris?
Working with our electrician to make sure we can pull power from the two locations that we're looking at for the light pole and the top light poles in the parking lot. And I'm reaching out to Phoenix Precast and Shea Concrete for bids for the wallards. I have an appointment next week with our landscaper to go over excavating, which I didn't know conduit only needs to be eighteen inches below grade. So excavating that earlier, putting safety barricades, safety posts and caution tape around that. I'll impose an OSHA violation for open trench because it'll be a very narrow trench also. So we're looking good and probably you're gonna have to vote on all the final pricing and everything. So I'm hoping at the next meeting in August, that will be, I'll present all that information to you and I think it'll be a very speedy installation.
I have one more thing, we almost forgot, the solar, we got the best news today.
Oh, yes.
The final piece, the study, the engine, the contractor for the, the engineer that was contracting for and the electric company got it done and got it back to us. And we were thinking the product might not happen, they were gonna get to it till July, so they were, they were fantastic. And they got it, he got it today, so he's now gonna draw up the construction calendar. So that was really big news.
Yeah, that's it.
Great.
Does she have any questions? No. Um, I've got fifteen local kids coming back to work for me this summer.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's got, I, I probably have, I probably have kids coming back to their third and fourth year.
Oh, wow.
A good handful of freshmen, eighth graders graduating, gonna be freshmen, so, yeah. I think that's great, having all those kids back. I need to help the other ones to get it done, I just give directions, so.
And popsicles, you give them popsicles too.
And pizza party and popsicles, so. But, yeah, we're ready for the summer.
Do you have any, any summer projects specifically planned or?
Solar, I'll be looking at, we have the rest of the fire alarm panel with, not the fire alarm panel.
That's gonna save us.
Yeah, they're not gonna dump that.
Finishing that up, we'll be starting that July first in the gymnasium. So at that, plenty of other things that need to be done, hoping to do a lot with the baseball field this summer. Buy a sprinkler system, so it won't be brown grass come soccer season, hoping to make it look real nice. And whatever other projects, small ones, A1, you know, A1 projects. And then the parking lot lights in August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, so twenty twenty-five on balance retention.
So I did put the sheet in your packet the time before, so I'm not sure if you have it again. But the number in the middle is your maximum amount that you can retain and that is three hundred eighty-four thousand three twenty-two ninety-three. So the board, the, as I shared with you last time, the amount that you set aside for retention comes back. This is a vote every single year. So whatever up you can retain to that amount, you can choose to keep it the same, you can choose to a lower amount and turn more back. It's at the board's discretion, but the max you can retain is three eighty-four. And if you don't have up to the amount that you retained, it stops, it will just retain up to that amount. So if you said two hundred and fifty thousand, you didn't have that, then, I mean, you're pretty much guaranteed to have two hundred and fifty because it's gonna come back into the pot. So I wouldn't anticipate any expenses coming in now, that would be that drastic.
So give me a motion.
We need to have an amount, you can discuss it first if you want, so you're on the same page with the amount.
Yeah, 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 it's a discussion.
So sort of, and we'll be, we'll be taking the ninety-five thousand out of this, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Do you have, you have, you have the estimated one sixty-four, the two fifty comes back into that minus the ninety-four five thousand. And then that one sixty-four is again an estimate, typically more money gets released right at the end. We try to have all the expenses as up to date as we can, but, you know, things always come in at the last minute.
So if we don't spend the surplus, do we, it don't matter that automatically?
No, that's an automatic, yeah. You've, you already did your decisions on whether you're gonna spend any of the retention funds, that's done, so that's part of the pool.
We're, we had the last one, didn't we, anything about the chairs? Like, we're gonna hear more about the chairs, aren't there still a few expenses that we?
Um, I, I don't know if Mr. Reeve has information on the chairs?
Uh, no, I did not have the opportunity to do an inventory on the chairs, so.
Okay. Because there were a few things that we said.
It was just, wasn't it just the chairs?
Just the beds.
Yeah, we voted in everything else.
I think so, I think so. So if we take out the ninety-five thousand from that, we have two hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two. You'll have the two, two hundred and fifty minus, we'll call it a hundred, so it's easier. So you have a hundred and fifty left and the one sixty-four estimated. Not a set in stone number, but.
Oh, so not the the three eighty-four?
That's just if you have, that's the most you could book to retain, but that doesn't mean that you're gonna have that, correct?
Oh, okay, okay.
There is a maximum amount that you can retain using that formula.
And can that, can those retained funds be used for emergency or something for trouble over budget or something?
Your retain, you re. Yeah, you retain funds if you got into trouble, could be with a public hearing, you could use those funds. And you also have trust funds if there was an emergency too, several different areas.
Well, I would, I would, you know, we're willing to spend that ninety-five. I would, I would like to return as much back to the taxpayer so we can.
Uh, three eighty-four?
Well, I think we're gonna work off of the two fifty number because, and then minus ninety-five, so, all right, one fifty-five is kind of work out of, sorry.
And the one sixty-four.
Oh, plus the one sixty-four surplus, oh, so we could.
So that's, that's sort of what you have.
I guess it doesn't really matter, yeah, because that's why I was asking about that.
An estimate to consider.
Yeah, so that's three hundred, that's three hundred nineteen.
Because the one sixty-four.
That's three hundred nineteen thousand. The one fifty-five and the one sixty-four is three hundred nineteen thousand. So that's where we have to decide how much we want to give out to the town.
Right, right.
Right, so the one sixty-four, you know, is automatically going back because we're not spending that, we would have had to operate.
It comes, it comes in back, it's a part of that pool. So this two fifty comes in, the one sixty-four comes in, it could be more, it could be less. And then that's where you got your total of three nineteen when you took out the mods. So now you could retain up to any month, the three nineteen is an estimate. So you might return the balance, you might not, you might have more to return. You won't know that until I propose the books.
So we have to decide how much we want to retain, correct, and then everything else, you're supposed to?
Correct.
But we would have had to already spent like this surplus money, you know, right? We would have already had, other than things that are right, so it may be right.
That's done. Yeah, that's done, that's what they left.
Right, that's, that's what I meant, but that one sixty-four or whatever it ends up as is automatically gone back.
Yes. Unless you take some of it.
Oh, we can return surplus as well?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I thought that was, okay, I got it.
So in the past, how much has been the amount you usually retain, like a?
You have two fifty, but I, I feel like it was more around two hundred, two hundred.
In the past?
Or, but I don't have the historical figures in front of me. Can we do that in case there's some emergency and we need money? So all of a sudden, it's something that's not in the budget that we didn't plan on.
That is typically, the board hasn't touched that and has been, that's what the board has intended to have for.
Yeah, yeah, to that point, I feel like just staying in the same cycle is not necessarily what I think people are looking for, so. And if we haven't used it, we haven't got to that. I'd like to decrease the amount that we retain.
Would that money, I know we have the trust fund, like special ed, but if for some reason, would this be something that could cover an unexpected special ed? Or also if we had five more high school kids move to town or?
Essentially, under the new statute, I would want to get guidance from Amber because I don't have it in front of me. But my understanding from her is that it requires a public hearing and then you're able to access the funds.
And special ed, I mean, you could easily have a student move in and has to go to a different school and you're paying two hundred and fifty thousand, that's what happened. And special ed, I mean, you, you could easily have a student move in and has to go to a different school, and you're paying two hundred fifty thousand, that's what happened like two years ago.
That's, yeah, that's why you keep the balance that you do in the special ed, just the special ed.
They'll send that. Right. Right, right.
Oh, right, so we have that separately. It is, I just feel like we need to.
And what do you think I'm retaining?
Um, so if, so that's three nineteen, and then we're gonna subtract out the.
No, we already subtracted it.
Thirty, yeah, okay, so.
Three nineteen, so.
Three nineteen, but it does, and then like Angela said, it might be a little less and a little more, but basically.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, so I, I mean. Drastically different, but if we retained, you know, somewhere between a hundred and one fifty instead of the two hundred that we've done in the past.
Yeah, I was thinking one fifty, just to not go crazy, like in case we need it, cause the next year, then we can see, if we don't use it again, then we know, following year, we can think about it too. What do you think, Missy?
I was like one fifty, probably three nineteen to retain.
So.
We've been kind of staying on two hundred last year, the two fifty.
Yeah, I was two fifty last year, yeah.
I was thinking one seventy-five, but.
I was gonna say cut it in half, so.
If that's about one fifty.
Around one fifty.
Yeah, I'm good with that. So I will make a motion to retain a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, is it retained?
Then you're, from your unassigned fund balance?
From the unassigned fund balance.
I'll second it.
All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in addition, both the presentations. Oh, this is, did you wanna?
No, I'm so official, so, um. One thing when I joined the board and decided to get on the board is I feel like we still are missing a lot of information from the public. Um, and, and not saying borders aren't educated, but there's, just being on the board, I know how much I've learned about things. And we did the special ed presentation last year, we did a space needs presentation, and I guess my thought, it could be crazy, I'm just gonna throw it out there, is to have one of our early meetings before we even start budget, cause once you start budget, it's hard to really discuss the budget with the community, but to have like an information night that breaks it down into sections, so like maybe review special ed cost, maybe review high school cost, review all the different costs in transportation, things like that, to kind of put it out there. Because we do hear that the board spends, spends, spends. And personally, I haven't figured out quite where we spend, spend, spend to the extent that we hear it. And I know that even this board, you know, when they talk about the expansion, no one on this board, no one was on this board when that expansion came up. And our discussions actually have been, no, we don't see something, yeah, so I guess I'm looking to see how people feel about having an information night where we can kind of break down sections, and even, I'm not sure how we could do this, but I'm gonna put it out there, is to, to hear from people, like I hear, again, they spend, spend, spend. Where are people feeling that we're spending? Like I hear, recently I heard that we have all this extra administration. And it's like, we have three administrators in the building, I believe, two and Lisa. So it's like, what, who are people feeling our other admin, I guess I would love to hear more from people, what they feel we can do, but also for us maybe, cause again, there were areas that, joining the board that I have seen, like, man, I wish we could cut something here, but we can't, you know, like under special ed cost or whatever. So I guess I'm just wondering how people would feel about having kind of an info, a budget information night. If we could put it together, and here I'm saying if we could put it together, well, yeah, I'm terrible with putting charts together, but I know Kendra's good at putting charts together, others might be good.
Kendra already has a lot of the budget stuff together, and then when we met last week, we talked to Jess about doing another presentation, maybe the new person or Jess, on the special ed cost, because things have changed, states aren't giving as much money now as they used to.
Yeah. Right.
So that's kind of two areas.
Yeah.
I like the idea of transportation, you have to put something together on that.
Yeah. Right.
Um.
I guess, and I know it's our job as the board to look for areas to cut, I get it, but I guess when I keep hearing, we spend, spend, spend.
I think the other, the other thing that would be nice too is to have like the state charts that say, this is what it costs to educate a child, and then this is what we're paying to educate a child.
Where, you know, where.
I think I.
Right.
Uh, I think from what the feedback that I'm getting is that we're, you know, among, uh, you know, the higher end of school districts, what we pay our teachers, that's one thing, the number of teachers in the building. Um, I, that's, that's the feedback that I'm getting about, and those are major savings, right? Um, every time we hire somebody, like, we just had several hirings, but what did, like, we didn't even discuss what rate did they get hired at, right, did they just get the same?
That's set.
Did they get the same money?
That's a set thing, to step level for teachers, depending on how many years you experience them, so that's nothing that we really even negotiate.
Okay.
That's the contractual, yeah.
But that's. Okay.
So if they came in, it doesn't matter where they came from, if they came in with three years of experience, they go to step four.
Yeah.
And their educational background is part of it, so it's sort of set.
So, but, at some point, we vote on that contract, correct?
It's when it's due for negotiations, you see that, yeah, which is, which is coming up.
Right, 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 that's it, yeah, I'm not saying, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, there's, yeah, so, I think, yeah, that's the feedback that I'm getting, um, where we can cut, and and, and, you know.
I just.
Making hard, hard, you know, plays like, that I've brought up a couple times, that I know is not popular, about, you know, one art class, one music teacher, you know, those are, that's, that frees up space, that frees up salaries, you know, that's, those are, those are the moves that people are looking for, to save money.
And so, that's good information to have, I also wonder though if providing them with some information too, as I think that's our job as well, so, again, transportation costs, special ed costs, you know, all those kinds of things, I just feel there's a way that we need to have more contact with the community that isn't just our citizens' comments.
Yeah.
But we could find, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I, I, I agree with you, I think it's just important for us to not just present it like, well, here are the costs, where do you want us to save, right? Like, like you brought up, like, we need to have ideas for each thing, like each topic that we present, it's like, well, here's some ideas that we're thinking about, and then they can comment, and, you know, how do you feel about those things, right? Um, but again, it's, it is really challenging, because, you know, even over this past week, with the whole purchase of the modulars, people rely on Facebook to, uh, try to have these conversations, and, you know, this, this room doesn't represent our community, you know, completely, so it's just, it's really hard to try to figure out what it is that people want, and weigh those.
Right, and even if we offer something, we may still have the same five people show up, you know, but it can be out there on, for them to watch at another time, you know, and ask questions, and, and I mean, that's the other thing, it's like, I, and maybe you hear from people, but it's like, since being on school board, I have yet to have anyone in the community reach out and ask anything, and it's like, I, you know, and then I'll read something, and it's like, we didn't say that, we didn't do that, so it's like, if you have questions, please ask too, you know, so. And I'm just putting it out there to, for something to think about, trying to find a way to reach out to the community, to inform them as much as we can. Yeah.
How can you say, you know, what you really think you could pack this month, they need, and it's very extremely involved. And not everybody wants to know all of that information, I understand, it's a good thing, and some people really do wanna know it, and some people, like, I get the information.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I definitely have to be as transparent as possible, and give the people the information so they can make informed decisions. That, that goes for any type of voting, so, so. It's not an easy job, but we can try.
So I think it's a good idea.
So I, I know Kendra and I are kind of the, what is it, one of the committees that we, communication, so maybe I can, you know, chat with Kendra and see what she's thinking, and then obviously, would bring it up here again before it ever went out there, but just, just, again, trying to get the information out there, it's like, I'm still learning it, and I'm on the board, so.
Yeah, we could, maybe we can each take a topic or something and make a slide or something for that, so. Pilot, make sure, are we allowed to via email, uh?
No, no. You, uh, you can't, can't conduct board business, if you, if you share a document, it becomes public information. So you would really, that's why you don't need two communications, people to work on things, you can send them something, say, hey, could you guys incorporate this, begin a discussion and work together. I guess, which is.
And then if we, Kendra may tell me I'm crazy and not want anything to do with it, but, um, if, you know, if we did, and we can share with them, like at a meeting or something, to get their approval of it. And I mean, and I guess I'm thinking it's something that would be done relatively early, because once we start in budget.
So am I to understand that we're not meeting in July? No, okay, so is that someone working, maybe?
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Kendra and see, you know, and everything, but I guess I just wondered what people thought, and we could try to put something together, and it may be, like, no, this isn't gonna work, but it just seems like, here.
If you, if you're making, if we're making ourselves as a board available to answer questions of the public, and to help them understand. I think that's, it's down in my direction.
Yeah, definitely addressing budget concerns is, is important, I, I feel like that's also something that's a little, it's like, we need to be discussing business like that, like regularly, right?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So. I think, yeah, I think it's a good idea, we're just gonna.
It was just something I wanted to ask, and then I'll talk with Kendra, we can, she's a very good slide person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, PTO update.
Hi. Um, so I don't have a whole lot, because we've kind of wrapped it up here, um, but we usually take the summer off, but we're gonna work this summer on recruiting, because we did a lot this year with a very small group of people, so we're really hoping to have some fresh, energetic kindergarten parents that wanna join us, so we can keep up, um, a lot of the things we've been doing, and we've all attended a PTO expo recently, so we have so many great ideas and so many great things, like educational assemblies, and a lot of great things we wanna do for the kids, so hopefully we can get a few more people over the summer, so we can keep doing all of the cool things that we've been doing. And it's great to meet you, this is the first meeting I've made it to that you've been here, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I recognize, you're, you have a child that, that's a freshman, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cause I remember you, um, my son Joseph's a freshman, so I'm just seeing you at some meetings.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Executive Board update.
Um, we have a meeting coming up, and our last meeting really was mostly hiring as a nurse for the preschool.
That was meeting on the twenty fifth.
Yeah, meeting on the twenty fourth, so, that's our.
Alright, Principal's report.
Thank you, um, this Principal's report covers May eighth, uh, June fourth today, June, uh, May eighth and nine, round, nine, excuse me, May eighth and ninth rounded. Rounded out our Teacher Appreciation Week, thank you always to our PTO and to the families and to your field goalies, making that a special week for our staff. Uh, it also rounded out Tricky Tray and our book fair, um, as well as the skateboarding unit in PE, that skateboarding unit continued through some of May, but, um, it was a busy. Saturday, May tenth, our Southeast District was the Southeast District Music Festival at Dover High School, so big thank you to our amazing music teachers, um, and to the students who participated, we had three students participate from the middle school and band, and three in chorus. Maeve L played the trumpet, Helen G played the baritone horn, and Elizabeth H played the flute, and in chorus, M E, Leah C and Scarlett M performed in the, uh, the music festival's course. Tuesday, May thirteenth, we, uh, our second graders took a trip to Portsmouth Music Hall to see a play. Wednesday, more, May fourteenth, our sixth graders left from Maravista and returned on May sixteenth, that was a sleepover science camp that they went to. Um, they had a blast, came home nice and tired. Our fifth graders started their ten-day visit to Starbase, uh, we have two teams going each week, uh, two days a week per week over the course of five weeks, and as you know, the transportation was paid for. Um, so we greatly appreciate the organization that did that, um, and in addition, on Wednesday, we had our spring concert for grades one through four, if you were fortunate enough to experience that. Um, it was a wonderful performance by our first through fourth graders. Friday, May sixteenth, our fifth graders took their field trip to Boston, this is the trip that they raise money for through their calendars each year. Um, they, uh, uh, take the, a bus, a school bus to the, um, to Exeter, they load the train in Exeter and take the train into Boston. They're there for the entire day and don't return until later that evening, it's like sevenish, they then take the train back to Exeter and then take a bus to the school, so that was their Boston trip on May sixteenth, it's been an annual event for many, many years, um, outside of COVID. Um, Saturday, May seventeenth, our, they used to sleep over at the Museum of Science, but.
I slept by the, I slept by the dinosaur, yeah.
Uh, they haven't done that since COVID really.
Four hours.
Saturday, May seventeenth, uh, was another band festival, the fifth and sixth grade honors band festival was at Ware Middle School, and again, thank you to our, to Mrs. Davis, and congratulations to Jackson C, Sam L, Lucas B, Sam P, Rebecca S, Colton B, Autumn D, Liam P, Sophia G. Quite a, um, showing at the, this music festival for our fifth and sixth graders. Tuesday, May twentieth, our kindergarteners enjoyed an in-house field trip with Wildlife Encounters, we've done that for the past couple of years, and, um, the kids just love it. Uh, we also had our spring concert for grades five through eight, again, another treat, if you were there, you would have been amazed by our fifth and sixth, seventh and eighth grade chorus and band students. Thursday, May twenty-second, our fourth graders took their annual field trip to the New Hampshire State House and the New Hampshire Historical Society. They were allowed to have a picnic in the park, but that was the day of the alleged nor'east rainstorm monster that we had, so, uh, they came home on the bus to have lunch. Uh, Friday, May twenty-third, our middle school band performed the National Anthem at the Fisher-Cantz game, that is also an annual event for our middle school band. Thursday, May twenty-ninth, our first graders took a field trip to Portsmouth Music Hall, and they saw Charlotte's Web after a, um, a read aloud, they read the book, um, and then saw it on stage, so it was a wonderful experience for them. Friday, May thirtieth, still going, Cannon, nice job trying to miss out on the middle school report, still going.
You might have time.
Friday, May thirtieth, we welcomed our newest dragons, we had our kindergarten kickoff, where families came in with their kindergarteners, and during kindergarten kickoff, the kindergarten teachers do a little intro, and then they go off with the teachers, um, and spend the morning with them, and administration and several other staff members introduce themselves to the, to the parents and guardians. You know, we have it in the cafeteria, um, every, the reading specialists are there, the math specialists is there, Lisa McConnell's there, case managers there. our food service director, our, um, office staff. And we just give them little bits of information about, you know, our school. Um, I have a slide deck that I will share out with the, with them as well, uh, with all the families, especially families who are not able to make it. Um, and then the afternoon is, oh, at 11 o'clock, Mr. Greve and Mrs. McConnell and I give a tour to the families. Um, I bring them right through the middle school. Mr. Greve avoids the entire middle school. I didn't know that until this year that he did that. Um, so, and then at 11:30, they, um, they take a bus back to the town hall. There was, um, a bus that picked them up as well, so we get a big picture of all the kids. So it's a great, uh, event. And then the kindergarten team spends the afternoon reviewing the students, the work that they, the things that they observed, and then start placement for our, our kindergarteners and kindergarteners, um, several of which come from our preschool program. Um, and then now we're in June, so our baseball team will be in the finals tomorrow. They're playing, they just won their playoff game and they will be playing the ever, ever so wonderful Mecca of Barrington.
Do you have any game plan? Do you have any ideas of this happening?
Uh, Tuesday, June 10th, our seventh and eighth graders will participate in the state championship for track. Us, us select a group of students. Uh, we have several representing this year, so, um, it's been, it's been wonderful to see when they can have meets and baseball games and softball games. As you know, May, Bay was very rainy. Um, Friday, we will have our monthly all-school meeting. The first and second graders are hosting and they've decided that they wanna play red light. They wanted to play red light, green light. I, I, I convinced them to play red light, yellow light, so that there would be no running. So, uh, that, that's what they wanted to play awfully cute. So first and second graders will host. Um, and then upcoming will be all things June with several field, field trips, uh, which I wouldn't be able to report on because the next June meeting, um, I don't have a principal report. So our third graders will be going to Patoka Way, our fifth graders are gonna be wrapping up their Starbase trip. Seventh graders, um, will be going to Canobie as well as Wall, Wall Sands. They have two end-of-year trips. Uh, we have Field Day on Friday, the 13th. And for, just to remind you, the sixth, seventh grade, eighth, seventh grades on their field trip, eighth grades in New York. So sixth grade helps the PE, uh, team do all of the games. They spend the last month or so learning the Field Day games and they're the ones that, um, run, run the show basically. And then our second graders will be going to VZ Park, our sixth graders will be going on a whale watch, our third graders will be taking a field trip over to the Philbrook James Library to learn about their summer program. And, um, our preschool will have their party in the park. And our fourth graders will also be, be taking a field trip to VZ Park, um, in the month of June before school gets out. Uh, all things eighth grade, uh, our eighth graders will have their semi on Monday, this Monday, June 9th. Uh, on Wednesday, June 11th, they leave for their New York City trip, which will, uh, they'll be coming back on Friday, June 13th, that's you. And then Monday, June 16th is our eighth grade graduation and then the last day.
It's Tuesday.
Wednesday, June 18th. So yeah, Monday, Monday's graduation.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know why it's Tuesday written down.
Okay. And that's all, thank you.
What time does graduation start?
Six o'clock.
Was there a number from kindergarten that you do?
Um, I think we're at 48, um, I, I can have a number for you. Yeah, and we had a few students show up at, um, at the kickoff that have not registered. So we're in the process of getting them registered to add to the, um, number. And, um, we've since had, I think, two, two families reach out regarding registration, making sure that they get, uh, information. So we're probably gonna be upwards of 50 any minute now.
Okay.
All right, current point of the new board.
Uh, we don't need to get any extra. And so these are third readings and the majority of them, uh, AC, ACR, ACA, ACN, JICFA. They really just have contact information, so they're all fine. I'm seeing a problem with them. JICH, again, we, uh, are accepting a new one from the, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association, which looks fine. So I would recommend you to answer that. We would approve those. But I do have a question about JIC, so. So what do we do?
So all but JIC at this point?
All but JIC, yeah. So I guess I'm making a motion that we approve the new policies other than JIC. Do I need to list all the policies?
They're on the agenda, so I think the press chief have them, you can list them out.
Yeah, they're, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I'll second that. All in favor to approve all of the, the policies other than JIC, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And.
JIC, do you have questions?
Yes, I have questions.
Um, are you, you looking at the admin edited version?
Yes, yes.
Just make sure we're looking at the same one.
Yes, so in the admin edited version, um, I'm not sure what the, um, maybe I should know this, but I don't know what the green highlighting is as opposed to the yellow highlighting.
So instead of code of conduct, we, we reference the student handbook and the discipline policy code.
So it's called, so it's disciplined policy code and getting rid of everything that's in yellow.
Yes, correct. We don't, and we, just because we don't label it code of conduct.
Okay. And then on the, um, the three-tiered support, we're calling it MTSS as opposed to MTSSB, correct?
We don't, we don't have, they're, they reference MTSSB because they have, use the B as behavior, but ours is just an all-encompassing MTSS.
Okay, all right. And.
It includes behavior and academic, yes, we don't call it MTSSB.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the other thing I wanted to ask was on number one, with the discipline policy code, says a graduated and age-appropriate system of supports and intervention strategies such as, I'm just thinking, like, I don't know that we do all of this, like peer mediation and instruction and conflict resolution.
We do.
You do that, parent counseling and training?
Uh, maybe not that particular part, but, I mean, Heather and Greg might do some work with that, but.
Okay, so you're comfortable with having all those things in there? Because I just, I just worry about it being in our policy and that somebody says, well, I never got.
Well, I think, I think that's why it says such as, because with the new, with the new dis- discipline, um, regulations, it was clear that they have to be graduated and they decided to put right in the policy because that was the question everyone was asking, what are graduated? You know, so that's why they gave like such as and they can give you some examples, okay?
And just for the, just to note, I, Mr. Greve and I went through this thoroughly, both of us, and I, we have copied and pasted the information that we will include in the updated parent handbook so that, or in, um, the student handbook in the fall. So we have that copied and pasted, so it's right in our handbook.
Okay.
And we can, we can go into a little more detail about what some of those things mean.
And I mean, I've, I've got no problem with the way you have it. I just wasn't sure if yellow was being got rid of and green was, um, and then I would.
Yeah, we've never done this before. So I didn't know, I didn't wanna delete something and like, just be like, wow, we just deleted a whole.
Delete a whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, in the handbook, it is called discipline policy or discipline code, we don't, we don't call it the code of conduct, so.
Okay, all right. And I mean, I guess I'm fine with it then, the way you've brought it, I just, uh, and I guess you're not gonna do the thing with the state and federal grants and that's why you got rid of that, right?
What, which grade?
Got toward the last page, it says the superintendent should also designate personnel to explore the availability and pursue any state or federal grants, technical assistance and professional development opportunities available to facilitate the implementation of MTSS.
We used, um, our ESER funds and that's how we developed MTSS, um, a lot of ESER funds to have a huge contract. Um, so anytime there's grant fund, if there were additional grant funding, we would.
Okay, so you don't feel that that needs to be in there though? Uh, did you highlight that?
I think it's highlighted from the School Board Association.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we did that.
Yeah, that's the, that's the NH, the school.
Maybe that was one of the sample policies, like question, like, you know, do you wanna include this for your particular board?
Oh, okay, so would that be included or not included?
I mean, I, I think it's fine because we always encourage, um, people to vote for grants. I don't know that you need it, it's up to, it's up to you if you wanna put it in or not. We do it anyway. Every time we hear about grants, we.
I can do it anyway.
It's fine if you do it anyway, give it in. I just, because I saw yellow, I was assuming that was a code.
I would probably.
And then if you wanna change the B, yeah, take off the B, so you wanna change that too.
But, but it does, MTSS, our MTSS system does include a wider approach as targeted support. So we would keep that language if we needed to.
Yeah.
If it was different language, I would, we would have changed it out, but that, and I, it's our, our work too, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I'm fine with it. I don't know if you guys wanna vote to approve it or, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, what was, did you edit?
Yeah, the edited version was in there. I think the clarification was some is yellow and some is green. What does that mean? So the, instead of like Brian said, instead of, he didn't want to delete anything, he wanted you to be able to see what was there. And then they added their, like, green. Yeah, no, it's just a letter B, so it's MTSS dash B, but we just call it MTSS. So there's just the dash B is the only thing we do.
Okay, so that would just have to be changed in that last one, that's highlighted yellow, yeah.
That one, yep, yep, I got it.
And otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with it, so.
It might have to be changed in the third paragraph too. I'm just reading this objective, the board adorses adoption, multi-tiered support for behavioral health and wellness as the framework for the code of conduct. At least, we missed that one.
Okay, so then we change.
Okay.
So we'll wait till next time.
Ellen, um, I can, I can, it's on your table with all of these.
I'm okay, I'm okay with making those changes. I think it's got. We just, it got, it got passed on for reading of, I really felt like administration really didn't look at it because that was stuff that we didn't know.
They didn't, thank you.
All right, so Ellen, maybe we'll.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve JIC student conduct.
I'll second it.
All in favor of JIC, say aye.
Aye. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
2024, 25, monthly expenditure report.
Yes, so these are just informational items. Um, we, Amber did publish, um, the monthly expenditure report, so that was in the drive for you to look at and posted online for public to look at. Um, there is the CBNA informational packet that some of you received. We went to the Co Brown Board meeting, um, gave that to Lexi, she copied that and put that in the board drive and it was also in the published packet for the vote to see. Um, and then you've heard the high school transportation update. And the two things that I wanted to add, oh, I added the landscape price change was in there, but Chris will cover that. And then, um, I, if some of you may have seen the posting for treasurer, we thought we'd solved our problem.
I know.
So just as a refresher or to let people know, um, your treasurer declined the position. So Eric Gross, um, graciously, um, sort of resigned as moderator so that he can keep going as treasurer. So when it comes time for him to be the moderator, he's going to have to stop just being the treasurer. He nominated as moderator. So, um, we thought that we, Dwight was gonna do it and then, um, there was a conflict. He's, he's on the board of trustees for Co Brown, um, so on their end, they said that was a conflict. So, and he didn't understand their board. So we have it advertised and anyone who knows anyone, it's a really important position. We can't release payroll, we can't pay bills, um, without a treasurer reviewing the manifest, um, before the checks are cut. So, you know, anyone, um, and Amber will provide training and, um, it's, it's how you know how to balance a checkbook. And it's not a.
I know, she was a.
What, what's just.
I was about, oh, that's a good question. I don't know.
Just curious, just so people have an idea.
Yeah, I can, yeah, yeah, I don't know that we put that on the listing. I can ask Amber though, it's a good, that's a good point, yeah. I don't think it's a ton of time, but I don't know what these are.
I think a lot of people may think about these public comments as well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, once you're, once you're sorted in the groove, you do know and you recognize like, oh yeah, that's the same payroll that we basically cut every two weeks and the amounts are generally the same and then reconciling books at the end of the month. But I'll, I, I'll get that estimate for you.
Um, did you wanna talk about the CBA packet or no?
No, I think I want.
Okay, you just wanted it posted.
I just wanna make sure it's posted so the information was out there so people could see it.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing that I would say about that is, um, cuz somebody had mentioned during public comments about, um, if we were to send all of our kids to CBNA, what, cuz that was part of the packet, was how do they determine, um, their tuition? So, um, somebody brought up about if we sent all of our kids to go around, it'd be the same.
Yeah, wouldn't change my price, yeah, just be whatever the price is.
Yeah, cuz all send to schools, be the same.
Yeah, everybody pays the same.
Per year, per year.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, cuz I did hear that and I meant to say something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, public comments.
Kevin Verbal McCarron Run. So, talking about spending and people being upset, and it's, it's hard to see, it's, it's small. But this is, this is basically a, like a 16-year tracking of the Deerfield School District proposed budget, default budget and then approved budget. And what's interesting is unless you zoom way in, um, it appears to be one law, right? So the difference between the default budget and the proposed budget, uh, for the last 16 years is essentially a distinction without a, a difference. In fact, sometimes the default budget was bigger than the proposed budget. If we look at this chart, the red is the Deerfield School District, that makes up approximately 80% of your tax bill. The blue line below it is the municipal budget, the town budget, uh, which makes up approximately 20% of your tax bill. And then there's a couple of percent that's the, the county, but, you know, that's in the, it's in the weeds. So, there's one more graph, so that, the red is the, the town proposed budget. The lower is the default budget, which is also the improved budget, approved budget, right? And, and so you can see the town's asking for money, not getting it because they're proposed and they're, they're default or, or, or going in two different directions. Take the last 10 years, the school district budget has increased by about 60%. If you take the last 10 years on the town budget, it's increased about 20%. So the town is averaging 2% increase a year in spending and the town is, uh, an average of 6%. So then, well, you know, what do you, what do you benchmark that against? So that, that's always a tricky one. So I, I like the Minneapolis Federal Reserve CPI index, it's a highly reliable number. You have to keep going back cuz they, uh, they revise numbers, so they, they look back at that and revise it. They didn't do hard math, so you gotta, you trust but verify this number. The last 10 years, if you average the CPI based on Minneapolis Federal Reserve, uh, the interest rates, uh, the intra-CPI, the inflation rate has been 3.75%, right? So, so the town budget is growing slower than, than inflation. The school budget continues to, to grow much faster. The other challenge is the last couple of years, we've had some spikes, right? Cuz we increased a lot of spending based on COVID money, so I guess there and all this other stuff. And then when that money went away, a lot of that stuff got folded into the, into the budget. I don't have the graph here, I, I apologize. But if you subtract out high school tuition from the district spend, you still have this spike in the last two years. So to say that that last two-year spike is a result of, of school choice and it's school choice that, that's put us in this bind, that, that. High school tuition's been going up, no doubt about that. But that is not the sole driver and I would say it's not the, the major driver of this. So part of the, part of the perception that I think a lot of people have is that they don't have a choice on the school side. If A equals B and your selection is A or B, then, then you don't have a choice. So it doesn't matter which one you, you choose because the difference, the difference is a fraction of a percent between the two, two numbers. On the town side, uh, you know, that, that's not true, it's usually, uh, several percentage points different. And so when people see these numbers, right, that gives them the, the perception that gee whiz, we have this rapidly increasing cost. And I get, you know, everybody wants to, to say it's school choice, it, it's not. You're right about how Co Brown sets their, their tuition. And, and what's funny is Concord essentially, um, has come to the same sort of position. They, they now have a formula of actual costs versus number of students. They do some division and that's where they come up with the, they come up with the number. And that's part of the driver. Concord struggles, Concord struggles with declining enrollment in most school districts. State have significantly declining student population. Deerfield is, we're less flat, we're, we're actually an outlier state. So, so you have, you have a lot of fixed costs. And when you have less and less students, you know, the cost per student goes up, your tuition goes up. That was one of the things that scared people about an unprecedented 13, the why that 13 years, lack of 13 was, it's like, when historically we were doing 10, it's the first thing that, you know, flash was on the radar, it's what's changing. And, and if you look at, if you look at Concord's student population and you look at their tuition rate, right, they're, they're, they're going, they're going across each other cuz their population drops. So the per pupil cost goes, goes up. There's also a decline in Co Brown for sure. There's also a decline in Co Brown for sure, uh but it's it's a percentage wise, it's the same amount. But the the absolute number of students is is less, so the curve looks flatter, but if you proportionalize, it's it's similar. But this is some of the data that's, some of the data that's driving, right? When you, when you look at the trans year over year, geez, eighty percent of my tax bill has gone up sixty percent um in in ten years. That's, you know, that's a big, that's a big bite. I I would contend that's not sustainable, right? There has to be some way to get that under control. And the reason the default, I think the reason the default and the proposed are always so similar on the school side is because default budgets have to adjust for contractual obligations. And that's a huge spend for a school district, right? Teachers are a contractual obligation. Your parents are a contractual obligation. Leave your administrators, even though they're individual contracts, right? They're a contracted employee, there's contractual uh obligations there. And then if you assume that whatever your bid price is for utilities, right, oil, gas, electricity, is what you put in the default because that's what it's going to cost you. Uh, now, now, all of a sudden, almost all your costs are fixed costs. And it's only things like classroom supplies and things like that that become discretionary, but they're small, they're small line item. Health insurance, teacher retirement, all that is contractual costs. So part of that, part of that curve is is because we've had, in my opinion, we've passed very generous uh contracts in the last several years. And and so that is a huge driver because it's not, you know, everyone looks at it, well, it's just the salary, but it's not just the salary. The salary, it's the benefits, it's the retirement, right? All of that gets gets added in. And and so that's 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 a challenge for the district because we can't, we can't keep having a a hockey stick. So that that's, that's where I think a lot of that public perception comes from. Thank you.
We do. There's small letter B. For hiring.
Did you say B?
B.
I will make a call to go into non.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I have to do both.
Yeah, to do.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.